Okay, so we're gonna now call the, give the whole section order. We're gonna go to the pledge of allegiance, but we do have to have the roll call on record.
Okay, Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Struble.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Leon.
Here.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
And Mrs. Aldrich.
Here.
Oh, yes, all present.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. In the last five minutes, the procedures for public participation have not changed. And we do have some announcements. Did we have no meeting after this?
There is no executive session.
There is no executive session, which needs to be commented upon. Any agenda edits, I don't believe.
We have to add the facilities.
Oh, right.
Are those ones that we want to just carry over as added consent at the voting meeting? And giving your report?
Yeah, if you can give it in your report, and then we will just add it as added consent ends to the voting meeting into week, is that good? Awesome.
And we will put that your motion would be carried through.
That works for me.
Maybe you want to forget it.
No, I understand. So, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of the staff and entire district, I want to express appreciation to the board for the tray of fruit and goodies that was provided each of the district building upon the return from spring break. It was much appreciated, and I got some positive feedback from the staff when I was traveling around the buildings, and they appreciated the thought. Along those lines, in returning to schools after spring break, our primary center, intermediate center, and middle school are all at approximately 75% in-person learning. So, 75% of our students each one of those buildings are participating in the in-person learning option, while 25% remain in the DBA, DL, and BBA option, with majority of those being in the DPDL. And the high school is approximately 60% in-person and 40% DPDL and BBA. We continue to update the COVID-19 dashboard daily. I related the number of confirmed cases that we have seen, a confirmed positive case, and we've seen a little bit of an increase in those in the past nine, 10 days here. High school's currently at five in a 14-day window, and middle school is at two. But in the 14-day window, just as a reminder, anything, once it reaches six at the high school, because it's a large building, has per PDE and PDUH guidance, and the middle school, once it hits four, in a 14-day window, we would have to shutter the doors to in-person instruction for two to three days to appropriately clean out, as per the guidelines and appropriate contact rates. So, with that, just as a reminder, and I think I reminded the board that we do bring our students back in person, and we wanted to attend the consequences of that. However, understanding that very persons are basically scenario for our students, the student with prom cancellation gives extracurricular code curriculars during those times of school closures for in-person instruction. On Monday, through the, on the 19th, the Office of Community Relations and District will release correspondence regarding return to in-person learning for DPDL students. Originally, we were looking at this in waves of bringing our students back that were blended, and then looking at a month here, and the students who were still participating in virtual environment, if they wanted to come back today, we'll be putting some specific instructions on the process to do so at the building levels, and who to contact for folks who were interested in starting to feel more comfortable with their students coming back to in-person instruction. So, that'll be released on Monday, the 19th. The high school continues planning for their end-of-year senior activities, and planning for prom, senior practice, that's all scheduled, and then also continue planning for the commencement of 2021. And Cabinet has started preliminary conversations related to the start of next school year. I know we're quite, not out of this year, but we have to start thinking ahead on what that may look like, and start developing a timeline as to getting some correspondence out to our families, our students, and targeting sometime in early June, July. But we should have some preliminary recommendations to the board by the Judiciary Committee of Hope, so just to let you know that we started having those conversations. It's never too soon to start planning, looking at that. That concludes my report, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cooper. May the board have any questions on any of the stuff that I'm doing.
Just a quick question, you said we're at five in high school, and then we're going to six. Is there something to roll off, do we have to worry if we have one, if we have seven days, or is it six?
The closest where we would drop off to would be on Saturday coming up. So, kind of in a peculiar spot with where we're at, we would have to not have any between now and the rest of school year.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
We're currently at six, at five.
Right, now we need to get to six by end of Saturday.
Well, we went, it's in a 14-day roll.
Right.
So, two of those cases are currently, we're today, day number nine. So, that would take us to Saturday until they drop off.
Okay.
So, if we want to have anything in the rest of this week, and those two drop off, then we're in good shape. But being one away and having four days remaining in this week.
Got it.
We're in a peculiar spot here.
How many kids are quarantined?
A number of quarantines, quite a significant amount as a result of this. I don't know if I have the specific number, I can ask Mr. Early to kind of give us that closer ballpark.
Yeah, right now, we did the middle school, we're probably already quarantined, one of them was rather significant. At the high school, we're probably at about 40 to 45 quarantined total. It just depends on, you know, how many kids within six feet for 15 minutes total.
Okay. And no other questions or clarifications? Okay. Moving on to finance. Lot, there's three, four, one, two, three, four. Three, four, five, and six are all things that were brought up and approved out of facilities last month. And the Apple computers that up high school and the staff came out of tech talk technology last month. So, that's all, at least, you might hear a little bit more detail when we get to committee reports, but if anybody wants to ask any questions about anything under that right now, got an answer? I'm hearing that from the board, do we have any public comments? Okay, moving on personnel. We have one retirement, two leads, three appointments. We are so close to ending here. So, any concerns or comments for administration, from the board, on any under personnel? Any public comment? Okay, moving on to presentations by board members. Do we have secretary's correspondence, Mr. Scott?
Julie, I don't have anything. I have no emails, no correspondence.
That's fair, because I didn't see anything there. Now, BCIU report, Mr. Miller.
There was a meeting March 18th. There was a meeting March 18th, that is mostly procedural, they extended their COVID leave practice until the end of June, where there was probably this specific, it was a approval of their technology products for the, we haven't quite prepared such one agreement with that documentation for supporting the internet for them. But that was really it. Outside of the meeting, Dr. Chapman was recognized throughout, although it was a stakeholder award that she was presented with. That was really it, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Miller about BCIU report? Okay, BCTC, Mrs. Thompson.
I actually was the alternate.
Oh, okay, Mrs. Gottfried, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was pretty uneventful, they aren't looking forward to this, and then we ordered a costume call.
Okay. I learned a lot when I toured the buildings, you know, the difference.
We're talking to a little, a little lack of freedom.
Right. Any comments, concerns for Ms. Gottfried? Okay. So, your board report.
Okay, so if I asked for a report, we did a survey. The survey included, uh, together with four dispensed 2011 graders, 12 graders, one temporary, and five non-graders. So, this question basically asks if they were going to be in person or fully virtual, and reasons why they chose to make that decision. Twenty-five are fully indicated that they were going fully in person, fifteen indicated that they're staying fully virtual. The response for why they chose that varied, but those indicating fully in person claimed to be more productive, suffer less from mental barriers, benefit from the direct interaction of being in person. There's also some negative responses about removing the virtual Fridays and the block scheduling. Overall, the students like being in person because they're a lot more, hold on accountable. For those who said that they were staying virtual, this response expressed that there was some sort of concern for the safety of everyone being back at once, and some felt that the adjustment to in-person would be too much, just the last school year, especially the sleep schedules for teams that they already had down. It's that the students are most looking forward to. Another one's response was seeing their friends that they haven't seen for about a year. Students are also looking forward to graduating, prom, sports and clubs, doing better classes. And asked the students to go prepare again for the new year. Forty-six responded, yes, and being responded now. So, that's pretty good. Other feedback, there was less material covered this year in summer classes, that was a common one, and so, overall, students were just happy to be back in person. Another reason about that is old high school jerry, Steve Club, has started up again. They have about five members, and they're starting to practice how they are for graduation. There's really a, of this, that, the picture of mashing contest, those students could join, and they have a chance to win, get cards, and they have certain, or the brushing try. Clubs are preparing for graduation. Thank you.
Okay, at the middle school, the middle school is doing really well. Unfortunately, most events of the councils are not occurring. However, they're very excited to host the incoming sixth grade family there. There wasn't that much to evoke, however, there's some students who obviously are cheerleading competition at Disney, while the middle school level TSA also has the Voltria stage this week. Overall, the school is doing well as they are preparing the interview, and the eighth pairs are being excited to move up there at high school. At the intermediate center, with the end of the year coming up, students are looking at the upcoming events. They hope that the IAC picnic will happen. On top of that, they want a multiple Voltria tour, which looks like it's actually in place this week. The students have a plan that they have learned a lot more now than they were at the beginning, and have finally gotten used to it all. They are sad there's a lot fewer activities this year than the students that are used to it. There are math states, weights twice throughout the day for 15 minutes outside. Students are looking for more classes outside than in here. The students have requested Voltria in their iPads, since they are struggling with using them, so that's fine. Lastly, class council amendments are now open to the entire school, so all the students are very excited to participate in these activities. And finally, the primary center, the piles and stuff are going to be successful last month. That last month provides a new day, and this one, they have an extra gym class. Classes are being held outside occasionally, for example, the math class is outside, and the students are issued for the objects. Math blocks, breaks are held very rare. They can have the math stuff during lunch and doing snacks, but when the math stuff is on, students are very excited for more advanced classes at the intermediate center. They are excited to go to IAC in another place. The iPads are still looking up really well, and they use apps like Warden Map in the classroom home. They can take the iPads and have their next Google group, but those now can't do. Probably the next few weeks includes picnic, kindergarten, summer school, field day, and one school, one book challenge. Overall, all of those students are coming back, if they do not want to.
Thank you. One thing I did want to say is, at today's facilities and transportation meeting, we did talk about procuring lessons for bridge days, for like, from kids going from the PC to the IC, and kids going to IC in middle school, kids going to middle school, to high schools, there will be a real, you know, bar disaster. We do have plans to have them, be able to have a real, everybody to have a real tour in the building, so that's, we're, we're, plans are in the works to make that happen.
If you have any coaches still not regular in school, also?
Yes. So, thank you all. All right, moving on to legislative report, Mr. Struble.
I have no, no, no report.
Okay.
I have a meeting tomorrow, I'm worried.
Okay.
Is it in person?
All right.
Not in person?
Oh, it's not?
I have not received any IPX related.
You did not?
I have not.
I'll forward that to you.
Awesome. Okay, any other board reports? Any public comments? Okay, moving on, head count statistics are there. Any comments, concerns, questions for administration on that? Any public comments? Curriculum Instruction Committee report. Ms. Aldrich.
All right, I think last time we talked about the one school on the program, and Preston refreshed my memory about the instructional coach.
Sure. We had the, jumping back at the KDA6, just the informational piece on program selection and resource. That was the status program, I miss all of the, sent that out of the city's main. Additionally, the special education team spoke about the IP facilitation and instructional coaching model, kind of updating the committee with the volume of work that's been done in the IP facilitation. And the main goal with all those updates is always to have the board see the investment that they've made, the tangible process of result that it's turning into, so we had that presentation as well.
Okay, that's all around.
Okay.
I'll give you one more thing, just to clarify. Summer academic connection of program enrollments underway, we have the first call go out this past Thursday, and we're over 100 students right now at that point, so we'll be another call on April 22nd. So, I suspect we'll be, what, 200 in that program, table up?
Okay. All right, next meeting is April 26th, should I see? Okay. Any public comments on curriculum instruction? Okay, extracurricular, what's for Miller?
We did not meet today, Chair of the Washington School, I saw it wrong. Any better, Joe, for being on, I forgot to give.
There is also extracurriculars.
As you saw from the weekly report, the spring sport seasons are off to a better start.
All right, so next meeting is what A10 says?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities, Mr. Struble, I know it a lot.
We just had, about an hour or so ago, great transition was reported by Steve and my partner for transportation, going back to, you know, the hybrids, and just coming back in, and then all the internal physical, it feels more comfortable that even though they're near capacity, I think they'll be fine, and they're in good shape, and it's going well. We do have a bunch of items that we brought for repairs, and all those are on our, you know, later on in our, for us to move on for our voting meeting. And then some things that we wanted to have added that we talked about, where, you create lights that are upcoming, which is good. One of the things we was able to do is go over some further thinking, some things that aren't in the budget for this year, to start moving, and start attacking other things. I really like the idea that these are really maintenance oriented, I think it's done a fantastic job. And then the April purchase requests, there's a part that's supposed to replace, needs to be replaced in the high school, we figure we might as well attack it now, we're very close to the, the, the budget, we believe these things will be underneath, but was hoping to get a move towards purchasing a part, we have around $2,500 for that one, and I think we can install that. The dishwasher replacement in the high school, it's just not working. It's time, thank goodness they're not serving lunch, it would have to be an emergency repair, it's just not, the water's not hot enough, and it's not functioning properly, so that for replacement, it's around $31,525, I would let that, leave that forward out of our meeting. And then last was a thermal expansion tank for the high schools, around $1,300, $13,000, which we were going to do not exceed, then that's for the parts, I believe we would install them.
Right.
So, they were the three things. The update is also quarterly FX, MX project, which is software that tie ties with all the bar borders, and so it was great work, I've had all this meeting for since I've been part of the board. We used to have hundreds of bar borders open, and now they're under 30. They are going to open that back up, it's probably going to have a little bit of a surge here, they're opening up the buildings, it's, the staff in September, but we feel it's going to be a great way to manage it for a bunch of different reasons, so it was pretty good.
Okay, any, any comments, questions from Mr. Struble, from the board? Next meeting is?
May 10th.
Thank you, May 10th. Any public comment? So, non-finance committee, Mr. Miller.
I guess we had a workshop on March 11th, and another budget workshop is scheduled for May the 4th. May the 4th, we're going to have a budget workshop, and we had a meeting on, what day was it?
The 22nd?
The 22nd, no, March 22nd.
Yeah, sorry.
Really, I guess we covered the ARP out, and just some general information on the budget. I'd ask for budget additional information presented at the meeting two weeks from today, so we choose additional numbers available on the 22nd, and then for the budget process, we really get into the details of hammering down the budget at the workshop.
And that's the first, the first Thursday in May, is that right?
I think it's the Tuesday.
It's the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday in May.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Tuesday.
And again.
It's not the 22nd.
April 22nd is when we have.
April 26th.
Yeah, that was the 22nd. April 26th is the finance committee meeting, there'll be some number development, then whatever we have, the workshop, the finalized push of the numbers is made.
Is there going to be some invites coming up for those as well?
It's a public meeting, it's everybody from public.
There was.
The invite already went.
The invite for the, yeah, the, but then, the invite for both of them, I think. One came from Kathy, Kathy DeNeely, and the other came from you. Or did they both come from Kathy?
Kathy DeNeely just got out more.
Okay. Yep. And, yeah, again, especially our newer board members, I encourage you to come to the workshop especially, to kind of watch the sausage meeting, so to speak.
Yeah, so I guess as far as the timeline, we need to have, um, the budget following maybe the.
Yeah. Okay, any comments, questions for either Ms. Haynes or Mr. Miller? Any public comment? Okay, moving on to policy, Mr. Scott.
Yes, we had a meeting just before our board meeting this evening, we discussed three policies. One policy was federal fiscal compliance, the second policy, 27, was conflict of interest. Basically, they're purely regulatory, so it's just pretty standard. We talked about, third policy, that's a use of school facilities and return, I guess, get opened up to category two, and also allow the parents to come in to the sporting events. Our next meeting is on May 10th.
Okay, so, as Mr. Scott said, the first two that we're moving on to, to the second, second reading, are basically just screwing up our, our policies to what the federal regulations and language call for, but as far as the facility use one, right now, facilities are only open to category one, which is school, school affiliated activities. Is that correct, Mr. Early?
Category one deals with school-related groups and organizations, send down little civic organizations.
Okay.
Basically nonprofit types of things. Category two opens it up to governmental groups, recreational and other service groups, and our meditation community, that's why we want to open it up there.
And things, and things like the, like, things like fundraisers for the Walk the Life.
That's a good example.
Things like that. I'm trying to think of some of the other things, it could be not necessarily, but like benefits the community, but it also allows for some fundraising, because the first one doesn't allow any money in hand, like every event has to be free, I believe.
That's correct, and the other thing to highlight is, we want to try to, we also chase some of the progress there to allow some of the local youth groups that use our gyms.
Right.
As an under-nine basketball team, the parents want to come in, but we don't allow them to come in, given the new governor's guidance in regards to that.
Yeah, okay, so, I just wanted, I want everybody to understand that, you know, it's, it's not going to be a free-for-all, but it does, it would, it would open things up a little bit more to our community. Some of the, some of the things I'm hearing out in the community is, you know, when are you going to, when are we going to be able to have those kind of events at the, at the cafeteria, at the, at the high school, or at the middle school, and things like that, that this is the kind of thing that would open up for like bingo events, you know, and the, any event that's held, it still has to adhere to our masking and social distancing requirements, you know, people would still be required to maintain those, it would just make, make, if, if, right now, we're just saying, you know, are you a school, are you a school, school entity, then no, you can't come, if you're not. So, it will allow us to consider ones that we're open to. I just wanted, I just want everybody to understand that that's the, that's what we're going on next, next month. Does anybody have any other, like, questions about how that works for Mr. Early? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Scott or Mr. Early about anything under policy? Any public comments? Okay, moving on to technology, Mr. Struble.
Yes, the internet, second internet provider, that is fully up and running, allocated, we submitted three advertisements for the trance castle. They had a trade-in, early trade-in opportunity for the iPads, the guarantee payback of over $1,000, which allowed them to early out the iPads, bring in some new ones, and basically keep us sane or a little less, which is a great idea. They had facilities, all of the laptops, the ones that are coming, the around $250, there was about $10,000 savings there. two hundred fifty, there was about ten thousand dollar savings there, and it was good. Online registration, trainings complete, setup was almost complete, and it'll be finalized in April, and then hopefully, there'll be a complete online registration, because things do in some hours, so it should be, should be pretty good, hopefully that's going to work out pretty good. And digital learning initiative, professional learning was kicked off on Friday, it was considered great engagement from everybody, and it was back in training for support, there was three sessions that were finalized, it's April, so that's, and it's not like we should be all three ago.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Struble about last, last month's technology meeting? Next meeting is April twenty-sixth, can I ask? The question will go to Mr. Hurley or to Mr. McKnight, is kindergarten registration currently happening online?
Yeah, kindergarten registration, like, should be posted, literally, I said today.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so we don't know how it's going.
We're ready to go, we did some piling ones with a couple kids, it went fine, but now we're going to have to cover.
All right. Okay, any, any other questions? Any public comment? Thank you. Old business, just minutes from last month, any comments, questions on that? Any public comments? Any new business, there is none? Any public comment? Any public comment on any issues? Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn.
To who?
Mr. Miller, about the second.
Second.
Yeah, this is Leonie, this is second, and he needs adjourned, thanks everybody.